Then we'll continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have with us today Doug Sloan, who's the Deputy Director, and Jim McLean, who has served for about eight or nine years now as our Chairman of our Planning Commission. Done an outstanding job as we've gone forward. Jeffrey Leach is here as our Finance Director, and we have several other members in the back if there are any significantly difficult questions that we'll refer to them.
Okay, and then before we proceed, there's one question, one question need to be asking is can you operate within the Mayor's proposed budget?
Yes, sir, we can. I'm gonna let, if you don't mind, Doug Sloan has actually dealt with most of the budget, and I'm gonna turn over to him to actually go through a little bit of our budget. But I want to say a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. This is my 40th opportunity to go through a budget process as I've been Planning Director in over 40 years. I started my career and grew up here in Nashville, and I'm glad to be able to end my career in Nashville. And I want to thank for the support of this council and this community over the last 15 years. I have really been satisfied I've had an opportunity to implement a citizen-engaged neighborhood planning process. It really has focused on building a sustainable and walkable communities. And it's really because we have had outstanding staff members that have devoted their time and energy and soul to making Nashville the best place that it can be, and a commission that has stepped out and provided leadership for this community. And I want to thank those. I want to thank the community itself for actually taking the time to become engaged in the planning process, to learn about planning, and to make meaningful contributions to where we are. And finally, I want to thank for the opportunity to be engaged in the planning process where we've had almost 20,000 people involved in looking at what they want this community to be over the next 25 years, looking at the changes that are going to be faced this community, and actually beginning to think through what are the implications of the changes that we're going to have. So I just, I want to thank those groups and those people because I think that Nashville's future is outstanding as we go forward. I think that under the leadership of this council and this mayor, we've made a lot of significant and critical improvements to our community. And I'm anxious to see kind of where we go from here. Now with that, we'll get back to reality, and I'll let Doug, if he has any specifics that he wants to touch on, on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan.
The couple of items I think that the council may be interested in is I know that last year there was a, there was legislation passed that, or I should say, a budget item that was included to allow each council member to do rezonings within their district, and that line item was put in there to allow for money to do that, and we're within the budget that we set out. I believe there was $50,000 that was set out, and we are currently at 31,600. I know that we still have a couple that are coming through, but we're within that budget, but hit it pretty close. Also would point out that our revenues are up. We're already at 105% of projected revenues for the fiscal year, so obviously we expect to exceed that by quite a bit. But happy to take any questions anyone has.
Councilman Anthony Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you guys for being here. What's the update on how the one-stop-shop is going down there, and just the process, and you know, how all that's going?
I think it's been a very big success, not just from the fact that I think that we're being able to process the applications quicker, but one of the biggest gains has been from the departments being able to understand each other's roles in the process. And I think that's been a benefit both to departments and to the development community in being able to process applications.
Just with development blowing up so much, last year we gave you that extra, you know, you got the community planner person liaison. You guys feel good about who you have, and we're in good shape as we continue to grow?
Yes, we were able to hire someone with experience, and I hope that they've been helpful to the council, and that you've gotten a quicker response than maybe before we had that position.
Any other, Mr. Anthony Davis?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Scott Davis.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Mr. President, quick question. This one's for Mr. Sloan. Can everybody hear me? Mr. Sloan, with what you and Mr. Bernhardt have had available as far as staff concerned, I think you've done a great job. Now, at times, you know, planning could get a little backlog, especially when you have 100 contractors and developers all in line on Tuesday, and then tomorrow is your PRC Day, is that how you pronounce it?
Correct.
So, being very conservative, how many additional staff members could you use?
How many staff members could we use?
Yes, sir. Being conservative now, not your dream.
Well, as we stated at the beginning of this, I think that we can operate within the staffing levels that we have today. It would always be better if we had additional staff to be able to help us out. And our hope is that once Nashville Next is completed, which should happen soon, that our current staffing levels should be adequate.
Yeah, I want to say one thing because it was a question that came up last year, I think from Councilman Claiborne, that there was some discussion about turnover, which is part of the problem. I mean, we probably would be even better with our staff if we would not have the turnover, which is there. But there were two individuals, just kind of anecdotal, there were two individuals that were mentioned as being particularly helpful, at least to that council member, and both of them have left to take much higher paying jobs. So I just, I thought I would, we still have the issue of retention.
I agree with Mr. Bernhardt that retention is really our big issue, because that actually causes problems, because then we have vacancies, and then other staff members are having to pick up the work while those vacancies happen. And then it's being able to pay those, pay enough to be able to attract the experienced individuals that really need, because the sophistication of the plans that are being submitted these days is much higher than it used to be. And so it takes someone with more experience to be able to do that analysis. So it's not so much the number of individuals, I think, as it is being able to pay the ones that we have more so we can get more experienced planners.
Very good. One last question for the moment. As far as the council liaison has been a blessing and a help, but with 40 kids or 35 that are district, sometimes they can be tugged upon. And I know I have one of those districts where, you know, I was spoiled in the beginning because I was able to have a planning officer come to a lot of my community meetings to help explain certain things. But since the great Nashville boomtown has happened, it's been very difficult, and I understand why it's been difficult, because like I said earlier, you had 100 people one day in line trying to submit plans for something. And that can be overwhelming, but your staff did a great job handling it. So my question to you is, you know, if we were able to put another liaison on the wish list, if we're able to, how much would that be? Or an additional staff member that can assist in other areas, not restricting them?
Well, I mean, I think that what we would like to, if we're talking about that and looking at that, what we're looking at is at least a planner-two level, and we can get that money to what it would cost, and it needs to be in our land development section. I'm sure that each of you have noticed that there is not a dearth of activity in your district. I don't think there's any, any district in this county that doesn't have a significant amount of growth and development.
I would agree with Mr. Bernhardt. I will say that I believe that once we're, Nashville Next, and this is I've found from talking to some of the council members, that some of them didn't realize is that, is that we used our existing staff to do the general plan. We did not add additional staff. And that that's normally a project that most cities spend millions of dollars doing, and we were able to absorb it within our budget with the staffing that we had. But it put a strain on our staff's ability to be responsive to council members' requests to attend meetings. But what we hope is, and we are getting very close to the finish line soon, that we will again be able to staff more of the community meetings.
Does that answer your questions, Councilman? Councilman Tiger. Yep, you're gonna take more than that, confuse me. I've turned, well, no, never mind, you did confuse me.
Technical question, I guess. Rick, thank you for your 40-plus years of service and whatnot. And I guess for Doug, as you prepared this budget, when you lose someone with this experienced level and a top director, obviously with a higher level salary, now someone new theoretically comes in, how does that impact, and how did you transform your budget reflecting the reduction in salary from a longtime executive director to a lesser leveled executive director?
Well, we had, the commission had a, at one of the meetings, we took up this issue about what to do with the executive director. And not surprising that the executive director of the planning department has to get along well with the administration. They have to be able to work well with the administration. And so rather than do a, go ahead and do a search now and hire a planning director with the current administration, the decision was made to wait until the next administration's in place to do a search and to hire a new director. So no adjustments were made at this time, because that would really depend on how the next administration wants to move forward with a search, and who they would want to hire for that position. They may, I don't think they're gonna find anybody with Mr. Bernhardt's level of experience, but they might find someone out there with a lot of experience, and they may need that to be able to attract them to this city.
So I guess the bottom line is, if Rick's retirement date is June 30th, and maybe you'll stay on transitioning and whatnot, I don't know what that plan is, but in theory that position will be vacant for a portion of this fiscal year. Has that money been deducted from the budget?
It hasn't, because we don't know what that period would be.
And technically, I mean, because I have some vacation time, I'm gonna actually be going into next fiscal year.
Right.
Which hopefully, by the time I come off the payroll, they will have decided what they're gonna do with the permanent director.
Sure, and I want you to take all the vacation that you're due and whatnot, but I'm just saying, Mr. Chair, as we look for, normally, we're always looking at, you know, where the money comes from type of thing. There may be a small opportunity here based on Mr. Bernhardt's retirement that was not totally factored in, but it will require John and Rich and Talia to do some calculations, perhaps.
Thank you. Councilman Tiger, Council Lady Allen.
Thank you. Just had a couple of quick questions, and I'm looking at the planning at a glance, and it's got this section called revenues and transfers, and y'all bring in a lot of money. I had no idea. Can you, it seems like a lot of that is federal pass-throughs. Can you explain, break that down for me?
Yeah, we can, we can break that down. The vast majority of that is federal money. The MPO is actually in our department for administrative purposes, so all of the, roughly the 10-county MPO money is there, and the vast majority of what you see in terms of the increase in this is out of the MPO money.
That was my next question, is what's the big increase? So that's the MPO money.
Yeah, it's a new grant from, it's a new federal grant, right.
And there is some, there's some income from filing fees? Do y'all get those, or?
We don't get them. They come to the general fund.
General fund. Is that, is it showing up here, though?
Let's see, what's, we have, basically, we have budgeted roughly $450,000 each year. We're exceeding that, as Doug said, and, but that comes back into the general fund.
Gotcha, okay. And then finally, just, do we, do what we charge in fees cover the manpower that it takes to deal with plan review or whatever?
We've gone back and forth over the years. We had a study, I guess now probably 10 years ago, that wanted a full-cost study, and so for a few years, we actually had a full-cost study that captured that. It was felt that that was punitive to some of the small developers and small developments, and this council altered those fees in order to what, to be what, what you felt was more equitable and fair. So there winds up being a trade-off in terms of, you know, how do you, is it trying to recapture all the fees, or is it, is it trying to process them in a way that's fair to everyone?
So you can at least say that what we charge has been sort of deliberately thought through, and is not just kind of, we've always done it that way. We've looked at how we come with that. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Thank you, Rick, for your service also. I'd like to echo Councilman Tiger's comments. I would like to ask about sub-area plans now that we are coming toward the end of Nashville Next. How do you foresee going forward with maybe looking at sub-area plans? I know that maybe, in switching over to the character policy, some of that was done through Nashville Next, but how are we gonna continue community conversations when it comes to particular communities throughout Davidson County?
Well, I appreciate that question. The Nashville Next process includes updating each one of the community plans based on the overall theme, and we've been working throughout the county on updating the community plans since the fall. And so it was discussed early on the process, did we want to finish the Nashville Next process and then start another kind of two- or three-year process of actually going through all the community plan process? And so it was decided that, no, that wanted to shift, as Doug had mentioned, we wanted to shift the resources into actually beginning to implement the plan. And there's a number of projects that I know that y'all are aware of in terms of everything from inclusionary housing policies to capital improvement, budgeting changes, to a series of code amendments that hopefully will get in that regard, will move that way. To the degree that there needs to be specifics, we'll be glad to actually look at those, but it was, it's the intent really not to be, to actually go back out of the planning process and into the implementation process.
Thank you. Council Lady Langster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I also would like to say to Mr. Bernhardt, thank you for the high level of service you've given to this county. And I have to also extend that to Mr., to the, to the Planning Commission Board, because without their strong support, following Jim McLean's lead and Doug Sloan's lead, and just seeing that the communities are protected as they should be, I don't think Nashville will have grown the way it should have without all of your input, and I appreciate it. But my question is, the reason why I've heard over and over we're losing some planners at the Planning Commission is because other companies are coming in offering a better salary, better working conditions, and compensation. But besides the raise that the council and the mayor are giving, is there any money left, I'm gonna ask Mr. Sloan, that you maybe could give a higher percentage of raise to new employees to encourage them to accept Metro's position instead of looking at the private sector of this? Mr. Sloan or Mr. McNeil, either one? Jim McLean, I'm sorry.
Well, to Councilman Tiger's point, I'm hesitant to do anything different other than the raises that are coming through. The council and the administration has graciously provided for. I'm hesitant to do anything else because I don't know what the future is for the director's position or what the next administration wants to do. And so before making any sort of, before dispersing any funds that might be left over after Mr. Bernhardt leaves, I would rather just pause and wait and see what the new administration wants to do and what the commission wants to do at that time.
There has been talk beyond just the, and there's been talk with the administration and the finance department about alternatives that are not necessarily salary-based, but looking at different ways in terms of retirement funds or having more portable funds and things that may be much more attractive to younger people than simply the salary. And it's also, I mean, it's really a fact, as Doug mentioned, the level of sophistication that's required in this department to deal with the projects makes people on our staff extremely valuable to private consultants and developers in other cities. So, you know, it's both a bad problem to have, but I'm actually glad that there's such a demand for our employees. If there wasn't, then it might question what we were doing.
But I hate to see this city lacking because of resources that maybe would encourage and give people a sharper look at Davidson County. Mr. McLean, do you, could you add anything to these comments?
Just one line. One thing I'd like to point out, Council Lady, in response to Councilman Tiger, there will be a period possibly where we don't have a director, but there may be some costs that'll be incurred in hiring a new, and maybe there's some travel. We don't know what that protocol will be just yet. So I would hesitate to ask for any, to see any reduction in the budget, you know, in that area, so. I'd just like to say that I think that the city has been blessed with the leadership and the staff for the Planning Commission at the time that I've served, and I think it's in good hands now. It's unfortunate that we do lose key staff members, not pointing those out as the key, but they're very important and very knowledgeable that we have lost, and I don't know whether there's a way to go back and make a study and change the salary levels of the different, different levels of the, whether it's a Level 1, Level 2, or whatever. So this time, I'd just say, give us all the money you can. We're under a strain, have been for Nashville Next, but that's gonna go away. But there is, every section of town that was pointed out, there's projects, and those come in, and to get those out in a timely manner and be user-friendly, we need the staff. So appreciate any help that the council will bear on that.
Very well said, but I think if everybody would look at the gentleman sitting on the platform, we could almost see who the new director should be. That's my personal opinion, thank you.
Newly noted, Council Langster.
I will respond to Councilman Tiger's comment. The commission has asked me to stay on as the interim director until such time as the new administration and the commission decide on what to do.
Good to hear.
Councilman Anthony Davis.
Thank you, Chair. And there was just one thing I forgot to ask, but yeah, I did want to add, I think, I think the Metro HR study we did said a lot of the metro positions, we do need, you know, increases over time, so I think that is a good point to make. It's a testament, though, to the good people you guys hire. I think that's a, that's the biggest point here. I mean, we work with you guys very intimately, and I think, I know I've made a lot of friends on your staff, and I think you just hire really good people. So that's also a testament that, you know, they're able to get other jobs, and they're good employees. The one thing I forgot to ask was the GIS software system. Is there any plans to like upgrade that software? Is that in the capital anywhere? Have you guys thought about upgrading that, your software system?
Yeah, well, we're, I don't know if you're aware of CityWorks and the new software that's being developed right now, and actually, we're testing it to hopefully roll it out in, I think, July is the goal, is it August now? So roll it out in August. And in that system, it's a permitting system that both, or all of the land use departments will be using going forward. One thing that I will bring up, though, that we're experimenting with in GIS is 3D modeling. That's a new technology that we think is gonna be very helpful, not only to, not only to us to be able to look at how the land use regulations that might be put in place, whether that's a UDO or a rezoning, but also for developers to be able to show a community what a project's gonna look like actually on the ground. You'll be able to see what viewscapes are gonna be affected, even the shadows that would be cast, where that would happen, and be able to show a council member, if that project comes into your district, this is what it would look like on that block, and this is how it would fit in with the other structures around there. And so we're, we're working with a company to hopefully try out their software to develop that 3D modeling.
Cool, that sounds really neat. And I might have seen, CityWorks used by other cities. I feel like I've seen something like that at NLC before, so great. Thanks for putting up with us all the time. Thanks for indulging council members. Your staff is great, and Rick, thank you so much for all you do.
Councilman Bedney.
You wonder what I'm going to ask, right?
I have a comment for you after you're finished, so don't worry.
Okay. I have, I'm worried now. I wanted to know, this is a small thing compared to everything, Rick, you've been doing. You know how when, I don't know if you noticed this, but some of the realtors in the private sector, when they put a sign out, it's interactive. You can get some information about that home just by, it's like a smart sign. I was wondering if a way for you guys to save some money will be to make sure that those zoning notices, those planning notices we put out, that they are more smart, where people could through some kind of a website or an app on a phone, get some more information about that particular rezoning, so they don't have to call your office and get information, and it'll be more easier for them to get the type of data they want. And it will also make our lives better, because people go asking for information.
Well, I think, I think that's something that we might be interested in looking at. As you know, a couple of years ago, we put together the Development Tracker System, which allows you to click on, you know, to find any application that is filed. We get it up, I think, within 18 hours of after it's filed, and you can click on and get, get all the information from the application itself all the way back through there. But those signs are something that I think the next director ought to think about.
Thank you. Councilman Westerholm.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just to echo the comments that have been already said, Rick, it's been great working with you as director, and appreciate you as constituent as well. And to the commission and to the staff, you guys have been very helpful. Quick question, I suppose, on the materials. Number 8 lists three significant risks that the planning department anticipates related to regional cooperation, community input, and some perhaps other information. Are those things that you anticipate can be addressed within-house, much like Nashville Next was, or are those things that are anticipated will be dealt with by new administration, new leadership at planning?
I think, I think those are issues that we see maybe globally there. The success of this community is partially due to the fact that we've had very strong regional coordination, but as we move forward, we've got to, we've got to kind of build on that. We can't turn our back on that. And to me, the two biggest challenges that we have right now, and the one that's going to determine whether we continue our economic success, is working, finding the solution to a successful transit system. I mean, we've got to figure out what that is, how those pieces go together, and how that works as a regional transportation system. Obviously, we broached that in Nashville Next. And then the second issue that's right along with that is the whole issue of housing affordability for all income levels. The tremendous demand, and it's gonna be ongoing demand for walkable neighborhoods is, in effect, forcing, what we're seeing is a suburbanization of poverty and lower-income families moving further and further out, and they're moving to locations that don't have access to services, don't have access to transit. So those are, those are, and so what you're seeing there is some reflection of that global concern or regional concern that we see that's gonna be everybody's problem and everybody's concern to go forward and succeed.
Thank you. Councilman Claiborne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a question about the, there's been a lot of talk about the director's salary here, and what should be or not be done with that, and I don't have a question, but I just have a comment, that when you look at a career director here who has been here a number of years, I would not think that a new director would be brought in at the same salary level that the experienced retiree is exiting at. So it seems to me logically that there would be some gap in there between where he's leaving and where the new guy would come in. Just my comment. Question about the budget, on, in our budget book, and I don't know where, how you relate to that, but there is a 58.5% increase in professional and purchased services. Could you give us some idea of what that increase is buying? It's under operating expenses, under special purchase fund, or special purpose fund?
Well, the special purpose, yeah, that's, special purpose fund is a federal grant, is what that, what that is. Well, the special purpose, yeah, that's, the special purpose fund is a federal grant, is what that, what that is.
$58,000, I believe, I mean, 58%.
Yes, 58.5% increase.
Right, that's a federal grant and that's really reflected, and I actually spoke with the finance department about that today. And then I think it's misleading because that's really money that goes to the MPO. That's $1.5 million, I believe, that's going to the MPO for projects that they're working on and doesn't affect our internal operations in the metro planning department.
Okay, well, that's good. That clarifies. Then one quick question is, are they, the, the community plans, the sub-area plans, are they online now? Have they come up online?
Yes, yes, they have.
Okay, so we can.
They're all, everything, everything is online, all elements of the plan itself. The last one was Access 2040 and I think it's, I know it's been over to IT, it's probably up now, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Community plans are all up.
All right, good. And so just in parting, I wanted to congratulate you on your retirement. I hope you have many happy bike trails in the years ahead. And I wanted to thank you. I remember back in 2007 when I came on as a new councilman. I really appreciate the manner in which not only I was treated, but all the new people. And you came out and spent a day and brought materials and, and said, you know, tell me about your district and explain some of the process. And it was very, very helpful to somebody who is wading into a pool that's vast. And so I really appreciate that. And I think that's been continued. I think that's very commendable. I love you. Departments for us, you know, some are easier to work with, some are more difficult. And I would just say, in my experience, the planning department has certainly been one of those that is more friendly and open and helpful. And I just wanted to thank you for that, for all of you and for your, your employees, those that I hated to see go, Ben being the last one. There's a lot of people that miss you, Ben, if you're out there watching this. But I just wanted to say thank you and I hope you the best in your retirement. Thank you.
Mr. Bernhardt, I want to thank you on behalf of the council members that are not here for all your years of dedication and service. And I too was one of those that you came out and ate at one of the restaurant and we rode around in my district. So I certainly appreciate that and I'll never forget it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do want to remind council members that when you make a special request to additional funding, that, that you have some idea where we're going to take the funding from. So that, I know I failed to do that at the beginning, but that's been, I think that statement's been made each, every year. So I just want to remind council members and Councilman Bedney since.